Recording two. Okay, here we go. Is that okay, Ritha? All right, so calling to order this meeting of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District. The date is Thursday, July 27th. It is 6:30 PM. Present are Commissioners Frosch, Singleton, who is chairing the meeting in the absence of Commissioner Holly. Commissioner Fort is present. Commissioner Hoffmeyer is present. Do we have any agenda changes? Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, I have either an agenda change or a board issue. That is the email that was sent out by the board chair in regards to the state of the levy appeal. I don't know if we want to add that on unfinished business, new business, board issues.
I guess, could I ask for it in board issues? Since I don't, I don't feel like it would be fair to us to try to resolve anything.
No, exactly.
You just want to share something?
Absolutely.
Okay. If that's okay, board, we'll just put that in board issues. Okay. Commissioner Fort, do you have anything to add?
Yeah.
Commissioner Frosch, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay. I would just ask, out of, I have kind of a hard stop, a little past 7:30. Hopefully that won't be an issue. All I would do is if we're still going at approximately 7:25, I would ask that we wrap up that item and move to the closing stuff, if that's okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. But I don't want to belabor that, that topic of conversation. We have no, we have no public comments signed up. That's good with that. Okay. Moving on, approve, oh, board issues, I'm sorry. And so, we can start with you, Mr. Hoffmeyer.
There was, there was an email that was sent out by the board chair. I think everybody's seen it. It was in regards to the state of the levy appeal, in which, you know, she stated that one commissioner had already resigned from the levy subcommittee, and that she was resigning from it as of Monday. And it seemed like a lot of the logic or the reasoning was, there is, as far as, as far as they have been able to find, there is zero interest without, within the community of people wanting to step up and lead that appeal. And I really think this is something we need to deal with quickly. Because even though maybe many of the votes are already cast in the current election, November is quickly coming upon us, too. You know, I think the time for dropping bombs or attacks over, it's probably passed us. But it is unfortunate that I feel that, that a lot of it has been foreseeable. And that was why I was, it was the biggest reason I encouraged the board to lay off of going after valued programs of the district and top to the election. But like I said, it's, that's behind us, and we need to figure out how to get something done quickly. And if the acting chair or the, the other, or Commissioner Holly would like to, when she gets back, I would like to be put on the levy subcommittee, and see if I can claim some community support.
You! Sorry, Executive Director McCaslin, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify what you missed over there. The levy subcommittee was there to make sure we got everything ready to get all the paperwork done.
Correct. And that was kind of how I read what she said.
Once that happened, that's why Commissioner Fort resigned, because everything the levy subcommittee was supposed to do was done. Now it becomes volunteerism. So, that's really where they are right now, on the issue. So I just want to clarify, the levy subcommittee isn't really there.
And I just, my thought was, I hate to see that subcommittee absolved before, before they reach out to anybody within the community to lead the appeal.
Can I, can I, a point of clarification, though? And I know that you'll steer me in the right direction here, because I know that you know that, that part of that, so, so I think, I think if I can assess this correctly, I think part of what we haven't done smoothly is transition from that internal function of getting the paperwork processed, and ensuring that we felt comfortable with the amount and, and all of that, to the actual external function. And, and that can be, well, so here, so here's the thing. Nobody needs to appoint you to that. And, and so, I think, I would, I would feel fine saying, "I'll appoint you to do that." But you know what? I think, in whatever capacity any and all of us can, and this, this is any and all of us in these seats, because Kaz has a limited role that he can play.
Right.
And I think we all understand that. But I think, I think it behooves all of us, because I will share with you, and I'm, I'm not trying to take away from your board issue time, that I think I was waiting to be called upon, I'll admit that.
Yes.
And, and I felt that I hadn't been. And, and that is not, I'm not trying to find fault with anyone else, but I think now it's the, "Oh, my gosh, we need to do something." And that's what I hear you saying, and I feel the very same way. And so, I think the call to action is kind of ours to kind of go, "What, now what do we do?" So, I think, perhaps, you know, you, if you can find out from Kaz, who else has been participating, you know, maybe you can kind of even just set up a, "Here's, here's a, here's a thing, you know, can we get together?" Because we didn't do that transition well, and, and that transition, based on the activities, has already taken place. Right? I mean, am I fair in saying that?
Yes.
Okay. So is that, I mean...
It is. You know, she talked in there a lot about, about, you know, basically that she doesn't feel that the public has been properly educated, and that the levy has zero chance of passing. Enough so to where she questions whether it should be put on the November ballot. So, I, I think, I, I agree with many of her sentiments, and I think we need to quickly rectify it. So, yes, any, any way we can reach out to the community as a board and get them to lead that like they always have in the past. You know, I know the parade has already passed us by, you know? There's a lot of things like that that we've already lost out on. But we need to, need to move quickly, though, so. I'm glad that we're in agreement there.
Absolutely. I, I think the thing we obviously do have to be careful of, is that while we may hope that everyone chooses to play a role, we obviously still have to be cognizant of Open Public Meetings Act.
Absolutely.
And, so, so that aside, looking at how we can do that, and so, you know, I, I know you and I certainly don't have the strongest of relationships, but I'd be happy to have a conversation with you about it.
Awesome.
If you'd like to do that.
Absolutely.
Because I think that's one thing that we can absolutely bring on.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Thank you.
Is that, are you, are you good? Okay. Commissioner Fort, board issues?
None.
Commissioner Frosch, board issues?
Nope.
Okay. I do not, as well. Moving on to approval of minutes. I'll be honest, I didn't get through all the ones that we had, but if anyone would care to make a motion, let's, if anyone would care to make a motion, I would start with the ones from 2016, that we received.
Can we approve them all, or, from 2016? Or do we have to do them piecemeal?
Well, we have, we have two sets of them. You can, you can raise the motion however you see fit. How about that?
I move, we approve November 21, 2016, regular meeting minutes, and November 28, 2016, special meeting minutes.
Is there, is there a second?
A second.
All right. It has been moved and seconded. Oh, my gosh, let me back up for a second. I apologize. You are on the hump for taking the minutes. Commissioner Frosch? Sorry, I just realized, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh!" That's, my, my apologies. So we are eight minutes in, and I, my, my sincerest apologies. I'm sorry, there's a lot going on right now, that is outside of here. So I'm, I'm a, I'm a caffeiney mess.
Was the minute meetings done, for 28? Because I know I didn't do it.
The 21st and the 28th are, were in fact done.
Somebody did it for you.
Yeah, you, you and I sat there and went over them that one day.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And all I did was put them into, I put them into text, after you and I sat there and you gave me everything. So I got that one. Appreciate it.
Okay. So it was, it was moved by Commissioner Fort to approve, I'm just restating this, to approve the minutes from the November 21 regular meeting, I mean, November 28 special meeting. Did I get this right?
Number 20, yeah, November 28, 2016, special meeting, November 21, 2016, regular meeting.
Yes. And it was seconded by Commissioner Hoffmeyer. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
No.
Commissioner Fort?
No.
Commissioner Frosch?
Nope.
There's no discussion from me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Do I have another motion regarding minutes?
February still, is February's done? So all the highlighted ones or the bold ones are finished, right?
They are, right. But if you, if you...
So I move, we, can we do all seven, 2017, the block two?
You can make the motion however you choose.
I move, we approve February 15, 2017, special meeting, February 16, 2017, special meeting, March 30, 2017, special meeting, April 18, 2017, regular meeting, and June 22, 2017, regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It moved by Commissioner Fort, seconded by, I'll just say Commissioner Hoffmeyer. Any discussion on these five, on these five sets of minutes? Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Did we do all that right? Okay. No, none.
Okay. Commissioner Fort, any discussion?
No.
Commissioner Frosch, any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. I'm just going to say that, for the purposes of this, I need to abstain, because I haven't read the last two. So it's, the, the other ones look fine, they're probably fine, but I just didn't feel comfortable. So regarding the approval of these five sets of minutes, as stated in the original motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, say nay. Zero nays. The chair abstains. So Commissioners Hoffmeyer, Commissioner Fort, and Commissioner Frosch voted aye, and Commissioner Singleton abstained. Voucher review. So those are what we had now. I know we're still catching up, but, by the way, just a little note on that, I know we're still catching up, I am now the worst offender. I can admit that. Of the minutes being behind, I will catch up on those, and I would ask everyone else, which would be Commissioners Hoffmeyer and Commissioner Frosch, to do the same. That is all. Voucher review.
I got a question for Executive Director. Did we ever take care of that, that charge for the dump?
Well, hold on, we need a motion.
I move, we approve expense vouchers, 7603 to 7652, at the amount of $36,793.14, and payroll transfer in amount of $41,283.37, for a total of $78,076.51.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Moved by Commissioner Fort, seconded by Commissioner Frosch. Discussion, we'll start with you, Commissioner Frosch.
No, I didn't see anything about that issue that you talked about last week with the dump. Was that in the expense reports of vouchers? I did not see that, so.
They'll be probably, they'll be next month's vouchers, but we're, with the student, because there weren't, no one noticed who these people were.
Okay.
And how they knew to use Northwoodby Park and Recreation District.
I don't even know how they even got past.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
They, they have a number system there. So when I go, so I could accidentally almost throw my number out. But once it blew me, and they almost put me under somebody else wrong as well, so probably pretty easily.
Do you have any other questions?
Oh, no. I was, if it's going to be next month, then we'll deal with the next month, so.
Have you hooked up with them yet, though? There should be a license plate. Okay, there should be a license plate hooked up with it, so sure, the county vehicle, they should have it figured out pretty easy.
Commissioner Fort?
Yeah, so on your paper we need to sign, it says payroll transfer from MNO account to payroll account in amount of $78,061. I think that needs to be changed to 41,283.37.
Yeah!
Okay, hang on.
Yep.
Do we have a title?
It's, it, the, the payroll has the total.
The payroll has the total, as opposed to the 41,283, which was a payroll.
I see, I see. Okay, so, we won't sign it tonight. What I'll do is I'll have her make the typo correction, and I'll leave it up at the front, and so as people can come in and sign it. And we can get it down to county anytime, so it's not...
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Commissioner Fort, do you have any other questions?
No.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, do you have any questions?
I have just a couple of questions. I was wondering what WIMK advertising is.
That is Woodby Island Makaroni Kids.
Okay.
So, they're, they're a group that, you know who they are?
I do. Yeah, yeah, I do.
I don't.
I just, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
So, they're, they're a group that takes stuff from other organizations, and they retransmit it, like it's on, it's on Facebook, really, for it.
Okay.
So they'll take stuff, and they'll take our posts on Facebook, and then they'll broadcast it to their subscribers on their page, and it goes out, and we pay them a few hundred dollars a year for them to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
The, I just was curious, credit card, there's a credit card charge for Holland Happening, and I wasn't sure what our interaction with that was.
Yeah, so, yeah, I have that one, I have that one ready, though. Yeah, so for Holland Happenings, they, they had some, had a couple photos made, and they had, and they had to get some frames, so, to put them in there, so they didn't look like they were just taking a piece of photo up to the...
Oh, so we had a booth?
Yeah, we had a booth.
Sorry, I didn't see it. I missed it, I guess. I, I missed it. Sorry, that's...
That was what it was.
Okay. And then I just, I had a question on the P and L. So we have running club dues of $95 of revenue, and so, "Go Us," however, are we currently running anything?
No. That was a prepaid, and that's going to have to be paid back. I'm just saying, we might just move it over to an account, that's up to them. Again, we had not enough people sign up, so we're going to make one more run in September, and then we'll have to circle back later, after we get it out there. I mean, it was advertised much, much more thoroughly this time, Makaroni Kid got it out there. The only comments we were hearing was 5:30 to 6:30 at night in the summer was, but that's whenever the instructor was available, so.
Sure, sure. Perhaps, this is just me, and I'm sorry if I'm going off book here, but the one thing I would say about that is, I was confused, and perhaps I am the only one who was in fact confused. But we used to have a running club, and it was for children, and then when I finally saw, and it was actually a while before I saw the flyer for this one, I didn't really, I guess I thought that we were reinstituting, and, and I know I missed the presentation, so perhaps that's my confusion. But I, I didn't quite understand, and so it was like, "Wait a second, I thought it was for kids." And so, to me, it was, I think, you know, I mean, part of it is, is what market segment are you really going for? And I didn't realize that it was as wide as it apparently was intended to be.
It's primarily kids are the primary audience, but we're not going to stop an adult that wants to come be part of it and do it. So it's not like we're targeting, you know, 35 and older, or anything like that. We're really trying to get kids, but we don't want to just make...
Want to be inclusive?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. It was just one thing that kind of, I was, it was surprising, not, that sounds ridiculous, but I think you know what I mean. Okay. Those were all of my questions. If there are no other questions, it was moved and seconded to approve the expense vouchers in the amount of $36,793.14, and payroll transfer in the amount of $41,283.37. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously. All right. So committee reports, is there a Clover Valley committee report?
Yes, I think this is last month before, it was after our last regular meeting, right? Yeah. So basically, we got the tables set up, and the benches are in there, so that's actually working out pretty good. We cleaned three of them. I still need to get another one cleaned up. I didn't have enough hose, so that's going to be during our next cleanup. I also have, from FRC, the person did the measurements for the new pavilion over by the tree line, and he's given me a list of everything that we need to do, that he just did measurements, and he's, he's fine with that. We just need to get the materials, purchase materials, but we need to find some company that is willing to donate a whole bunch of the materials, because from what I understand, that $1,250 that we have is not going to even cover just the materials. So, that's still work right there. And also, FRC Northwest is also looking into finishing the fence. I still have to get the date, but that's probably going to be in August. But I have to get with them, and they have not got back with me on that. So, there is a regular park cleanup next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, on the 4th, if anybody wants to come up on there.
When is, sorry, what's the date?
The 4th.
Park cleanup, August 4th.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner, if you'll shoot me an email with the time and all that, we can make that a, we can put it out to our generic email thing, for anyone that's volunteer. We can also get it out as an event on Facebook.
Did we ever come up with something about the whole, we had to sign volunteer statements saying, "Hey, we're, we're not going to be responsible for any injuries," or anything?
I can get you a bunch of those, and when they come out there, you can just have them sign it.
Okay.
That's not hard at all.
Yes.
So I had a question. Last month's regular meeting, one, one of the commenters from the...
Public.
People, public out front, mentioned that, you know, it was slightly unsightly because of overturning pools and stuff. I was hoping somebody would comment, the fact, you know, those are, we fill those up for the dogs, I'm assuming, to swim in, and then when we're, when everybody leaves, we turn them over so you don't gather water and mosquitoes. Somebody could really explain that. There was a reason they're out there, they're not out there to turn it over to be unsightly, they're turned over to keep the water out of them, and then filled back up when, when the people come again. So they're, they're being used, they're not trash.
They're not trash, no. The ones that are actually...
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to explain that to her.
I must have missed that one, then, because I think I had to take off before that. But basically, those pools are there for the dogs. There's roughly about four of them right now. If they get trashed, we throw them away. Usually, we just turn them over and put them all on one thing.
Yeah, which makes sense, because you don't want, you know, get some water sitting in there and mosquitoes.
Oh, yeah. And that's one of the reasons why we put the, the French drain in over by the water bowl, is to get rid of all the water that we dump on there, so it's not such a big mess.
Yeah, yeah.
But sometimes it, or Woodby Island, it gets windy, and those pools get thrown all over the place around there. But since I'm pretty much there every day, I try to clean up as I, as I go. I get the pools, try to put them in one area. Those are used, and I don't dump until I about leave, so.
Yeah, I don't know if she ever called back, but...
She didn't.
Okay.
I talked to her a little bit about it, but I didn't talk to her about that.
Misty Ellis.
Misty Ellis?
Hmm.
Is it L-E-L-L-I-S?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll try to get ahold of her, because she might be part of our Facebook group. So if I get ahold of her, I'll just let her know what's going on.
You, you mentioned making an appeal for donations in regards to the materials for the pavilion. You know, I think Cascade Lumber is a Island County company, they're out of, off of X Menno, but they're Island County. You got Frontier, and you got Home Depot. I think any of the three of those would, would probably be on board. I think, you know, I remember recently, a lot's been on since then, but we passed a, we passed that sign ordinance, and I don't recall if, if that was set up to take, to take in-kind donations in place of the money, because what was it, $500 for a sign or something?
We haven't adopted official policy yet. Yeah, no, we haven't.
So it would, it would be nice if we could somehow figure out, okay, if you give us $1,000 in materials, sure, you can put a sign up somewhere. So that's something we'll need to figure out, I guess, as we go.
We're still looking into the actual, for donations. Home Depot, I know when we went over there last year to get the, our account set up, because I think we got a contractor account over there, when we purchased that $2,000 for the fence. So I, we still have that account, and hopefully, we're going to get that discount as well. But I still have to talk with them, see if they're willing to donate that. But I think that's a corporate thing, by say, just the local Home, well, Home Depot there.
I would think, as, in lieu of any policy, I would, I would personally say, "Let's not hold it up." If there's a proposal for how we can handle this particular item, then I would, my suggestion would be bring it to the board. Right? Because instead of saying, "Well, we don't have a policy yet, so let's not deal with it," let's deal with it, and we can then still work on the policy.
Well, I think, I think Mike might be right, too. It might be a corporate decision, and if it is a corporate decision, it might be much easier for them to sell the, it as advertisements, is what I was thinking, so.
Cool. I do, I do have one more thing. We still have a GoFundMe account for the park. Some people are still donating that. I mean, we only have maybe about a hundred bucks in there, but is there any way that we can try to transfer that to Northwoodby Parks and Recs? So if anybody, because if somebody donates it, somebody's going to have to have the account money go into their account, and then that's taxable to the person that is going into their account. So if we switch it over to the Parks and Rec, the park, District, then that could alleviate out-of-pocket for volunteers that are running that account.
Yeah, come, come talk to me, either tomorrow or early next week, and we'll talk about how we can make that happen.
Okay.
It can happen.
All right. There's no program committee update. I think, I don't think there's anything additional for a levy committee update. So, moving on, action item review, do you have anything to share with us on that?
I have a couple here, that are still outstanding. So our broker still has started this month looking into this thing, so he hasn't got a complete answer back to us yet, but he's still looking at insurance options, see if we can get something that's lesser.
Decreasing the...
Pardon?
Decreasing our, our rate?
Yeah. If there's one that'll do it, yes. And the next one was the breaking out of security fees, the fee for our security system and the security calls. You'll see that in the mid-year revision. So, so it's, until that's done, it's still in that part.
All right. Is that, is that all?
Yes.
Okay.
You had, I think last, last month, we talked about the Coach Taylor Hotel two, two times for the same day and same amount, and you were going to verify that it was actually two different nights. Did you do that?
Um, I thought I did, and I thought I emailed it, but let me ver, I'll redo that. I thought I emailed that, and I remembered it exactly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So there's no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, Island ice proposal, when you are finished writing down your action item.
Okay, so, I have, we have a guest with us tonight, Christine Crisp, who is the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. So, last winter, the Chamber of Commerce rented a portable ice rink. It's a synthetic ice thing, it's not really ice, it's synthetic plastic, it's a plastic type thing there. And they did that as, with the concept to build some community involvement and grow some tourism in the holiday season out there. It's located, they ran it for six days down at Windhammer Park, and the rental cost for that entire thing, to do a turnkey event, was $22,000. And it, what Christine was able to do was get it 100% sponsored by the local business people to put up there, which included the rink and all the accessories. The only thing that the Chamber did was they bought plywood base that had to long, because it's sitting out on grass. It needed to be on something solid out there. But in one week, they netted fifty-seven hundred dollars through pre-sales and actual at-the-door ticket sales up there. Now, keep in mind, that's what they a hundred percent sponsored the event. So there was no input, other than local business volunteering and donating, and they were able to make fifty-seven hundred dollars. So Christine and I, at the time, she goes, hey, would you guys be interested in doing this? And I said, oh, let's talk about that later in the year, to get through the end of the year stuff. And then sometime, May time frame, we hooked back up again on the idea. And we met a couple of times and talked about how it would look and everything. And she, during that time, had sent out a survey to the five hundred, eight hundred, how many people?
Five hundred and seven.
Well, five hundred and seven Chamber members, and ninety-eight percent said, yes, let's do this again, is what the claim was. So then the reality set in, why can't, why doesn't the Chamber do it? Because no one will insure them. Well, they will, but it would be grossly expensive for them to cover the insurance and the liability cost for it. So, we talked about it. And the proposal is, based on what our goal is, ours to grow and expand our offerings to provide additional recreational activities, would be to work with the Chamber, hand-in-hand here, and to turn this event over to us. So what their intent with events like this is, is to go in there, create this event, and then come back and turn it over to a company, or an agency, or a service organization, and allow the Chamber to create more events that can be turned over there. The proposal for this one is for us to take over the event, operate it, I mean, I'm just right now winging it. What my idea is operate it from Thanksgiving to Valentine's Day, staff it with some people there. To do this, we would have to have a capital campaign that the goal would be to seek local business sponsors to fund a hundred percent of the initial setup costs of all this right here. And we, meaning we, but anyone can help, will partner with the Chamber to create and run the campaign out there. And then through a hundred percent sponsorship, we own this. So it's set up for a period of time, it's broken back down, it's stored next year, or whenever you want to bring it back out again, it comes back out and does it. So, the next thing we'd have to do is find a place for it. So I went out with Hank Nyad, who is the City Parks, my counterpart at City Parks. And we narrowed it down to, we looked at a lot of places, but narrowed it down to four places. By the, by the Chamber, right there on Twenty, right there on Twenty, between Northwood Beebe Middle School and the Chamber, are these tennis pickleball courts out there. And it's right there, and it's, you can't miss it from Twenty. That's, that would be an ideal location. I would have to get permission from the school district, because they own that. But Hagan's parking lot, right on Twenty, would be one. I don't know who owns it, but I'd find out who owns Hagan's, because Hagan's doesn't own it, they're just an anchor store in there. Who owns it, and then I would go, all right, well, so would you guys let us use this for it? The next place is the old Burt Ford Lot, which is, you turn right there on Twenty to head toward Coopville. It's that empty lot right there, which is actually almost the ideal place for it, if Dan Burt will allow it to be rented. And then the other property is over on Bay Shore, kinda next to Alfie's, where they do the music festival and they do the carnivals and all in there. There's a place in there that we could potentially use someone's property in there. I mean, we looked at all these other parks that are in the thing you had there, but there are reasons not to do it. One of them is having something that's already a prepared surface, asphalt or concrete, means that for three months, I'm not sitting there killing the grass, having to cover up with, you know, a skating rink that would last that long. So, the opportunity that we see in this is to meet some district goals by offering some new stuff for the, our, the community out here. It would be a seasonal event, a shoulder of season activity. It could be used for fundraising. It's unique. There is no other skate rink real or otherwise within sixty miles in either direction. Bellingham and Everett, south of Everett are the two closest that are out there. And it would, it would help show the public that we're doing, we're trying to do what we can to provide additional recreational activities for them. And then hopefully, build some community through the sponsorship of the businesses in there and the people that want to get into it. So the business concept on there is, if we can get a hundred percent sponsorship to purchase the equipment, we operate it from Thanksgiving to Valentine's. And we do so on, right now, my initial thought is we do this on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night, or Sunday, from two to eight o'clock. And those are all, these are just the way I've done the initial stuff. Not have it Monday or day, except during the two weeks of Christmas break that the school gives. But have it on select nights. We can, we can reduce that number, we can increase that number. But you keep it not where it's a daily thing and it's there, but it's, you know, people have to wait for it to open. You could do themed events there, Santa's skate, Valentine's skate, you could have business parties, birthday parties. I mean, you can, all sorts of stuff there. We, the district could do a fundraising event. I mean, there are all sorts of ways to do it. And then another thing is to make use of a lot of the free advertising that's out there. Woodby, Woodby Local, that they have, the Beetsma Park sign, we'd probably be able to get. Macaroni Kid, I mean, I said, it's not really free, but it's a way, once we have an event set up, I mean, it goes out and hits it. And that goes mostly to kids, who are probably gonna be the primary, would that be kids be the primary audience there? So that's kind of the overarching business concept of it. The next slide, though, is who our competition is. There is no competition. It's either, it's either we do it, or someone goes somewhere else if they want to skate. So what do we have to do, resource requirements in this? We have to solicit sponsorship, and that'd be the campaign that Christine and I would work on and go out and do. And, because the idea would be to get local industry to fund this a hundred percent. I'd have to have personnel, so I would have to figure out how to staff it. Technology would be one of the things there. And our idea there is either a phone or an iPad, if a business would donate something like that, that we can, if someone wants to pay, not prepay at the pool, but come there, and they still have a card, we can swipe it there. We can do that through the bank that we're with right now, anyway. And music system, and then the products, you'll see on the next slide, the next slide there. There are two companies that cover four different columns there, of the things that we would need for it. I've spoken many times to both companies. But basically, it's the rink, the accessories, paraphernalia, retail, if we're gonna do that. Railing and kind, decoration, meaning, well, the business, you know, like the Home Depot, where they donate the wood for railing around it, to do it. One of my plans is to have lifeguards man this as part of it. And that way, and have an AED out there, because you never know when something's gonna happen. But, but at least we would be prepared to handle first aid and medical situations, at least initially, until the first responders get there. And then, I need to look into services. Do I have to have permitting? Can we get around permitting, the electrical hookup, which would be talking to Puget Sound? On the next slide, you can see the initial costs. So I'm going to call them one, the one that says global synthetic, right there. This is what comes with there. The rest of the stuff is somewhat included. Some of these things aren't covered by all of them. And I don't have all the answers back from them, but I didn't want to hold this up. So, the panels for thirty-foot by sixty-foot set, basically, the panels are four feet by four feet, would run total around thirty-two thousand. These are not official quotes or anything. The, move to the middle column there, where Easy Glide three fifty, that's their predominant, with this other company called Easy Glide, of all things. They're around thirty-five thousand. Their next step up, you know, next generation is Easy Glide five thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand. But they also do a refurbished option, which would allow, which brings the price down to just under twenty-eight thousand. And you see that it includes almost all of that stuff in there, that you would know, that you would go to. So, the capital campaign would be going for something in the neighborhood of twenty-eight, thirty-eight thousand dollars, depending on which of these options that was chosen to go for. On the next slide, you can see, this is revenue projections. And revenue would come from admissions, and that's all of these revenues in the middle table that you see to the right. All of those revenues are just from admissions. I don't have anything for charging the vendors to come down over and set up a truck and sell coffee or whatever right there. And it has nothing to do with, if we thought we wanted to get into branding some, the district, and Island Ice is a brand, and, you know, Pat Stars, whatever in there. And any other sponsorships that we could potentially get for helping reduce the annual cost. But you can see, what I've done is I've broken it, if I do this six-hour block, two o'clock to eight o'clock at night, and I break it into hour-and-a-half blocks, people would come and pay seven dollars, they're paying seven dollars to come skate for an hour-and-a-half. So you can see that, if I could average twenty people per block over a day, that's five hundred and sixty dollars. And then the rest of them are just, if I can average more. I don't know what that's gonna do, if that's a lot or a small number, but that's an average. I know there'll be times when it'll be busy, there'll be times whenever it'll get weathered out. So, it'll be, depending on how well we get the word out, where we are located, and, you know, how good the event runs, or the, yeah, the event runs. The next slide would be the financial projection, and these are the expenses. This, now, the expenses, there are some things that aren't on here, but this is just the labor, the expenses right now. And you're looking at a manager, you see the price per hour is, covers, I mean, that's the loading cost, that's not the wage rate. That's including the matching and everything, and payroll. So that's about a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a day, just in labor right there, if I have two people manning it full-time. I mean, there are supplies, but again, the object here is to get as much as we can from local industry to help us set this up. Then, the next slide is, I just wanted to take a quick look at what projected net income might look like out there. So I'll just run across one of them, the rest of them, read the same way. I'll use the, an average of twenty skaters per block, that hour-and-a-half block, came to about five hundred and sixty a day, minus the labor expense of a hundred and sixty-eight, it's three hundred and ninety-two. On the calendar I have, I have about fifty-five days that this thing would run, assuming weather did not get out. Which, if everything's, the initial costs are all covered, and, you know, other little minor expenses are in there. But that alone is a twenty-one thousand five hundred plus dollars in revenue, net revenue, that we could potentially bring. And last year, for just six days, the Chamber made fifty-seven hundred dollars, just in a six-day run. The next slide is really nothing but a graph, a visual graph of what that looks like. For the first, the long column of the L is the, the one vertical is the daily, is the daily revenue. And then the horizontal one is, the one next to it is what the labor expenses would be. So the key issues right here are, can we go out and run a capital campaign and get funding sources for this? We believe we can. The, what supplies, so that, who would cover the supplies, that would be the vendor. What type of rink, rink to get, the vendor, both vendors would actually recommend the same thing, so it's, that's pretty set up. You know, then it's how you set it up, where do we store it, how do I, how do I staff it out there? The vendors, do I purchase an AED, or will the Northwood Beebe Little League, because I found out that they have one that doesn't get used in the winter. It sits in on shed, so maybe we can just borrow theirs in the winter. You know, people would have to sign a hold harmless when they come there. Insurance. So I called the insurance company and asked them about this. They only asked me one question. They haven't given me any other answer, because I, we, I'm not going forward with anything until I know that I've got, I'll go ahead, at least move forward with this. The only question they asked me was, how big is the rink gonna be? That was the only question that was asked, not anything else. So, and it's a recreational activity, and they sponsor, or they cover recreational people, so I just trust that they, I agree with them.
So, we don't know what the cost would be, extra cost would be?
No, we don't know that yet. That would be part of what I have to go forward with. So until I, I didn't ask them that, because until I was gonna give them, this is what we're gonna do now. I didn't, I didn't pursue any hard answer from them.
Oh, well, I think that'd probably be a significant amount, so I think we need to know that.
Don't we, don't we know it? It's thirty by sixty.
No, but we don't know what the insurance.
No, no, I know that, but, I mean, we have the.
Well, whenever I asked them that question, we were looking at forty by eighty, and I gave them that number. I said, probably a forty by eighty, but it could be smaller, because last year, the one that the Chamber ran was a forty by eighty. But the two companies say, you should start with a thirty by sixty. If you want to grow it, you grow it from there. Which is just buying more panels, because they're, they're, it's basically like those gym mats that you, that have the interlocking weave, and you tan them together, and they sort of lock. That's really how they put it together. So, I mean, there are lots of things to find out, secure locations, secure funding, find out if there's any permitting, and then run this through a, the way I would, the way I do it is, all right, I'm someone, I've walked, what's my experience when I walk up? Where, if I'm walking up and I want to go here, this is what's gonna happen. And from there, I can backtrack all the things that have to occur to make that happen when the person walks up, so. But, the way, the way I see this, and the reason that I'm bringing it here, is I think it's a great opportunity for the district to expand out there, build some longer-term relationships with some of the local businesses out there. And I think that, based on what Christine said, if ninety-eight percent of the five hundred and seven Chamber people responded to a survey, with the ninety-eight percent, let's do this again. I would think if we don't do this, we're giving someone else a chance to go and do something a piece of success and make money out of it, when we do it.
Could I ask, actually, could I ask, process-wise, could I ask if there are any burning questions that we ask them now? However, with other, this would be my personal preference, but I think it's also in fitting with our board procedure, that we give this consideration, since we've never seen this document before. That, so what I would ask is if we have any burning questions right now, that we ask them, but that we consider it for, I would love to finish what I'm saying, just so we agree on the process. That, that we leave this for either the consideration, meaning voting at the next regular meeting, or at a special meeting, if for whatever reason, it's deemed that we need to do it prior to that. Is that, is that a fair process to expect?
You mentioned possibly a special meeting as well, and that was the only thing I was gonna add in. I mean, looking that it's, it's almost August, then the next regular meeting would be almost September, and time seems of the essence.
And then we get the board member changed out, so that could be a hindrance to.
Not until November, but we will have to have decided by then. But, okay, if we're, if we have consensus that that's okay, and if we need to call a special meeting, we'll do that. You know, we can do whatever, but, okay. He seems slightly more persistent than you, so let's start with Commissioner Fort.
Well, first one to raise their hands, which is supposed to go.
Well, we usually, we actually usually follow in an order. Go for it. Let's, let's do this.
Security rink when closed. I'm supposed, security when the rink is closed, how do you, how do you keep people from, do they empty it? Or does the water get defroze at night?
Well, it's not water. It's not water. It's a big.
Okay, how do you keep people, how do you keep people off of it or out of it when it's closed and?
I don't know. How did they do that last year?
They didn't have any security watch, and we didn't have problems with that in the general part.
You had no problems last year?
No problems.
Okay.
Other than I could ask the police to keep an eye on it more, because sometimes at night, I ask them to watch the pool more.
Sure. So if the Chamber made money, why don't they want to run it again? I assume that they use volunteers to go around and get all these businesses to donate money. We probably are gonna be using paid staff to go around and ask.
That would be neat.
May I share how we did?
So it wouldn't be no extra cost, because you'd be going around.
Well, me, or any of you guys want to be part of it, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like to.
In two thousand sixteen, in February, we have an annual awards banquet, and I brought out dry ice on stage. And I pitched the idea to members, and I turned it over to the emcee, and he didn't ask. And that night, he raised fourteen thousand dollars toward it. The reason that the community needs to own it is because the majority of that twenty-two thousand dollars was in insurance. We're Chamber of Commerce, we're not putting kids in pools. We don't carry that kind of insurance. So it'd make more sense to purchase it for ten thousand dollars more than I would be able to rent it again. But if you, if you, there is a sense of urgency, because I raised that money in February of two thousand sixteen. We've been working on this for a couple of months, and we need about six weeks to raise the money to then go ahead and purchase it. But the majority of that rental money went toward insurance, so that's why.
How did you staff it then? Did you pay staff?
We had volunteers, we had Chamber volunteers, and one Chamber paid staff was in the visitor, the portable visitor information center. And I'm telling you, even with sweets coming down sideways, people were on the ice. There were families that showed up as hockey players in all matching jerseys to skate. I mean, it was, it was really cool. And to have that kind of response after the first year, I mean, nobody could let it work if they were just blowing up social media, saying, what is this, an ice rink in the park? You know, we thought we did a good job to market it, so, but I'd say it was extremely successful. And then to find out that members want to do it again, and that they would help sponsor it, that means we work together and go raise the money. That Kaz and I would go raise the money.
Is there a canopy we could get for, for that, so the weather doesn't cull or melt?
We could, but then that sort of takes away the skating outside in winter feeling.
Only for rainy periods, or bad weather periods.
Right, raining.
Yeah, but you'd have to put it up, take it down, put it up, take it down, that's, that's not feasible.
Only during bad weather, though.
Yeah, but you, so during good weather, you'd take it down, during bad weather, you'd put it up.
Well, how many good weathers vice bad weathers are gonna happen?
I mean, it's a large place, it's a large canopy, that's not gonna work.
Can we move on with the questions? Sorry, I just wanna, I wanna be sure that, because I know you have some questions as well.
You have a couple of questions. One of the things you could do with that, you could put up a thirty by thirty tent and cover half of it. But anyway, a couple of, one of the thoughts I had was, it seems like the location by the Chamber might be best, but it's, you know, however that works out. You know, I was thinking of potential sponsorships and this and that. And I think as long as you got a title sponsor like Brad Ling, again, I mean, things move pretty well from there. But, I was looking at sponsorship, and why would people sponsor it? You know, maybe it creates some package-type deals out there. Maybe people are like, hey, you, you can go skate, and then you can warm up and watch it play at the Playhouse, or you can swim, and vice versa, package deals maybe. But then, what that led me to real quick, it led me into a segue of, there's no skating rink like it within sixty miles. If there was a proper package deal with it, and given how weather can be in the winter, and how quick it could start, maybe, maybe people would stay in hotels here. And it made me question whether LTAC money is an option.
May I share something else? So this came from, the year prior to that, is when we watched the New Year's Eve Friday Show, which was at nine o'clock. We wanted to add to that experience with LTAC funds. And actually, if I'm correct, two thousand dollars of that from county two percent funds helped pay for that that year. So it wasn't completely two thousand dollars for that.
That's good to know.
But it was to cultivate, we all, those of us that have kids certainly know that how many times we've heard, there's nothing. how many times we've heard, there's nothing to do in a park in the winter. Well, lodging doesn't want you to promote summer activities, lodging does, is booked, is booked, they're at capacity from April through Labor Day. So, this actually brings something that the original intention was to drop tourists, and so you're absolutely right, 2% funds could be used for that, and it's, they already have been used, set from the county.
Set up Airbnb and go for that one.
The other thing about sponsorship is, these people sponsor one week event, do you know how easy it's going to be to pitch? Thanks, Dan. How easy it's going to be to pitch?
It, it is on our recorders.
I like that stuff.
Yeah, we, we have, it's the long-
I don't want it in the newspaper, if we're gonna go ask businesses to-
That's a public meeting, unfortunately.
Okay, well, anyway, I think it should be really easy to pitch. To pitch sponsorship when last year sponsors, it's okay, we're one year, I mean, we're one week, right? Last year sponsors, sponsored this entire event for a one-week event, it would be wonderful to tell them, it's a 12 and a half week, or 12 week, whatever Kaz has on there, a sponsorship, and you put their banners up for 12 weeks. You know, there's the exchange for the money, they get that exposure of, of their banners displayed in some way, or something like that, and-
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, the only other, the only other thought I have here on this is, you know, following, following the business concept that Kaz put forward here, it seems like the only thing he's asking that we authorize is that he is able to go out and raise funds, and I certainly would like to see us move ahead on it, you know, as soon as we can.
Um, and, and so, do you have any questions?
No, the only thing I recommend is, is that we have a, a location where a lot of people drive by, if you have it by the Chamber Commerce, how many people drive by that compared to over by 20 in the corner of, uh, a win, um, the park right there, the light, so it, it's a high, highly traveled area, because everybody goes through that corner-
The Chamber's on 20 as well.
By Toppin.
Oh, yes, uh, but how many people actually notice that compared to actually-
Ow!
Mattson, I, you think it noticed, but to tell you truth, I've, I've been here since 97, and the only reason I know that thing is there, is because I had to go talk to you guys a long time.
No, but that's okay.
But if it's in the corner where everybody has to see it, and they're ear-
Location is really important, yeah, we were at whichever park last year.
Location, location, yeah.
Yeah?
No, actually, the Bird, uh, the Bird, uh, car lot that they have.
Absolutely.
Where all the fireworks stands used to be.
I, I have, I have one concern with the, with the Bird property, and you mentioned permitted and stuff in here, but, given, and I think it's why that lot has such a hard time selling, I, I worry that the city might say, you need to have a traffic study done for something that's gonna be there for six weeks, and I think it's why that lot has sat for so long. I don't think they're gonna allow a driveway to go that close to a stoplight.
Well, he may not, I had a discussion that I had with Christine, too, who may decide no, it's liability to him, it's too much for-
And the only reason I was saying by the Chamber is, because it's by the Chamber, they, they are gifting this opportunity to us, I feel, and it's so close to the pool, you know, it's so close to the pool as well. But like I said, it's, it's your show, so I'd like to see you be able to do it.
It is an area where the, the farmer's market is, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
So, that could be a, a plus right there, because everybody knows where the farmer's market is.
So, okay, so my question, well, actually, mine, just initial impressions, this is the first time I've seen this, um, on page five, there's a cost for, I know, and, and there's a cost for, and thank you, by the way, thank you, um, there's a cost for skates, but it's only under the first, um, column, I don't know why that is, because these are, these are different options, are they not?
They're, they're, yeah, they're different, let me get to page five, sorry.
Okay, it, there's a, there's a cost for skates and sharpener of $8,625.
Right, so is, on the first column, we go down, and skates and sharpeners are there, on the other one, it's broken out, except for the sharpener, they haven't given me a sharpener.
Oh, okay, sorry, again, it's the first time I'm seeing this, and it's very small print.
That's all right.
The, I, I think the other thing that, just to consider, is that it's probably not entirely scalable, and so I, I think that that needs to be a consideration. So, again, if we made $5 in four hours, it, it doesn't mean that you're gonna make $50 in, in 40 hours. I, I just, I mean, that's, it's just a consideration for that, for that time period. I, I do, I, I actually have other questions, and it is 7:25 right now, which Commissioner Frash was tight enough to point out to me. The, the one thing that I would like to ensure it gets on the record for right now, though, is, knowing that we don't know where we stand with a levy right now, that makes this, what, even if it was, if it's the best, I, not, I shouldn't say even, because that suggests that it's not, if it is the best idea in the world, it is still a, an enormous risk, and, and therefore, because we're basically saying we would like to purchase and spend money on something when we may in fact be in a very different financial situation very soon, and so that is a cause for concern for me. I, what I would like to do, if I can, I, I will get back to you in, in one moment, but what I would like to do, because I know I have more questions, is I would like to submit them in writing, and I'd encourage anyone else not to send them to each other, but to send any questions that you have to Kaz, and so that, that perhaps we can get kind of a readout of whatever those questions are, and that can also include Commissioner Hawley, um, prior to discussing it again. You know, it sounds like, so the six-week lead time thing is important for us to understand and know, obviously, it takes longer than that to advertise it, but just in terms of materials alone, so I think there's probably a little additional information. So, what, the other thing that I would ask you to do is, when would you like a decision by?
I would like, I think, to, to do a six weeks, to get it done by the first of October, which gives us hopefully a chance to buy and, and do the appropriate advertising or anything. I'd, by the middle of, by the, by the middle of August at the latest, I would think, I mean, that, like, I, it's, that's-
I can just say that what you're risking is, by waiting till the middle of August, I'll just say, we're going to do this this year. So, it's a matter of whether we raise the money to buy it, or I go raise $25,000 and rent it again. And now, would you, so, if, the longer we wait, the harder it will be to bring that back. When I remember saying, oh yeah, you're gonna bring it back, I need to go raise that money now. So, um, so the sooner the better, actually.
Do we have to do it this year? Can we, it seems that would be impressed, and, and this, we're getting so close on this, can we sort of let you do it this year, and we take it over next year? Look into taking over, so we can really look into this a little better. I think we're, we're really rushing into this, and we don't know the costs, and we don't, I don't know.
Our costs, if, if it's 100% sponsored, our costs become the, the staffing, the insurance, and any other incidentals that go with it, because the initial cost of the whole thing is to be 100% sponsored by local. That's the, that's the-
That's the, that's the thought, we haven't gotten 100% sponsorship.
Which they have last year, they got 100, so that's where we're going right there. So, the only thing that we're really doing is not, is living.
So, well, here's, here's the thing, guys, I, I think we need to, it, it sounds like, it's, it sounds like there are two things occurring here. One is, it's, it's really difficult, and, and I, I hope that it was understood that we wouldn't be making a decision on this tonight, we haven't done that on anything significant in the same meeting we bring it up, we, we've agreed to that as a board, as our policy. What I would like us to do is to submit the questions, and, and I'm, I mean, I'll say, I'm happy, not, that's actually not true, but absolutely willing to try to schedule a, um, special meeting, but where hopefully our questions can already, you know, that we can have answers to our questions, so that we can, because more questions will come up. Because I agree, I, this feels, this doesn't feel rushed to you, this feels very rushed to me, and again, not just because I'm over-caffeinated. Um, the, right, to us, to say, okay, you don't know the fate of your district, but are you, are you willing to commit to this for our community? Because I, there, there are, there are huge thing, you know, huge boulders of comparable size on each side, for me, anyway, and I need to resolve, I, I would feel the need to resolve some before I can vote a certain way, and, and I hope that everyone else can at least, even if they think they know the answer, give it consideration. Commissioner Hoffmeier?
Um, a couple of things, really quick. Follow, following the business concept that I seen here, it, it felt like to me that what we were being asked to authorize, and I understand it wasn't gonna be tonight as well, but I feel like what we're being asked to authorize is, is to move ahead with something once the 100% sponsorship is reached, is that, you, you're not suggesting that we spend $30,000 of our money, correct? And, and so, so what you're asking is that we wouldn't move ahead until we reach the 100% sponsorship?
Well, I'm not gonna go ask people if I can't move ahead, it allows Christine then to execute her alternate plan to do that, but if we could, it could also be, if we don't achieve 100% sponsorship by, you know, this tripwire date-
Yes.
-that we give the money back, and then go, or they all, they flip to something else, and it's not ours.
Can I just tell you, if you raise the money, I, I don't have, if your hesitation is about raising money to pay for it, we'll raise the money.
I think, I think if something like that is built in, and spelled out like that, I think that's gonna help people feel more comfortable.
So, can we, can we schedule a date for a special meeting, please?
Yeah.
Sorry, guys, but we still have one, at least one item that I believe has to be covered in this meeting, which is why I asked you about it yesterday.
Can I, real quick?
Uh, I, I have, I have five minutes until I have to leave, and, and I'm not trying to be unkind, but I was very clear about that. So, again, if we could submit any questions, opinions, anything to Kaz, he can distill them, if we can please set a meeting-
I am available any day next week.
How about I do it the way I did it? I'll send out a mail to you all, and you reply to me individually, I'll shoot a suggestion out for a date or two in the next couple of weeks.
Can we just use Doodle, please? There's no reason, okay, I'll talk to you about that. It's much easier, it's going to be much easier. Um, but if we could do that, and I would prefer to wait until Commissioner Hawley's back, so that she also have, okay. All right, so, but you will take the action item, I'll talk to you about it.
Have 30 seconds?
Uh, no, um, and respectfully, no, because I believe, and I, I, there are two others, so we can potentially do the same for executive director performance evaluation, do we need to, I'm, I'm sorry that I'm jumping ahead, but ballot resolution for November, do we, does that need to be discussed tonight?
Yes.
Okay, that's what-
What you have, is, what, um, is it in the packet?
It, it is in the packet, yes, or I, I still have it.
So, this has to be, this has to be submitted August 1st, it's just the same thing we did the last time for the August 1st ballot. Unfortunately, August 1st is the, is the due date for the November ballot, so we won't know if we win by the time this is due. So, this is just what we talked about the last time, we have to submit another one. So, it's a new resolution, the only change to it is the date. That's the only change to that resolution from the last one.
Is there a motion?
Did, did you have something?
I, I move, we, okay, here's my motion, I move, we, we decrease the requested levy rate to 16 cents per thousand for November 7th, 2000.
For Resolution 1702?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, for the second discussion, yes.
Okay, so it has, it was, it was moved by Commissioner Fort, that we, uh, I'm gonna state it a different way, and I hope, please tell me if this is unacceptable, that we accept, that, that we approve Resolution 1702, changing the amount to 16 cents or less per thousand, is that accurate?
That's right.
Okay, and it was seconded-
For the six-year levy, yes, request.
For the six-year levy, yeah, request, and it was seconded by Commissioner Hoffmeier. Discussion, Commissioner Frash?
No, no discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Fort?
So, so with the increased district assessed values, up 7, 10% probably, since the last, we will get probably $610,000 to $615,000 from the levy at 16 cents per thousand, which is considerably more than we're getting this year in 2018. We're trying, if, if it doesn't pass this time, we're gonna, we need to have a hook to try and encourage the public, I think, to try and vote for this. We can show them that we, if we can show them, well, we're actually decreasing your levy costs, we're, we're increasing, we, we're providing saving, the savings we're providing, but, and, and changes we've made, increasing rates, we're probably gonna generate, we could probably generate up to about $100,000 more in 2018 than we, over our costs versus what we're doing now. And that's a lot. So, that's the reason, I think we can do that at 16 cents per thousand, with the changes we've made in, in staffing, what we're going to make, and the, the, we need to increase rate, user rates, because it hasn't been increased nearly as much as the levy rate. The levy rate has increased from six, from $99,000 in 2, in 1985, when we had an admission rate of $1.75, and now the admission rate is, what, four bucks? And, uh, the levy rate is like, is providing, if it goes, even at this rate, it'll probably be 65, 63 to 65% of the levy, which is, I mean, of the, of our, our total costs, whereas back in 1985, it's only 30% of our budget. So, we're trying to convince the public that we're trying to be good stewards of their money.
Um, a process check really quickly, does, does someone else, I, I don't know what the protocol would be, does someone else want to take over the chair of this meeting? Um, because otherwise, I have five minutes until I have to leave. I, I'm not trying to be unkind, I'm not trying to be unprofessional, I, I just, it was better than not coming at all. Um, and if the answer's no, then, then if we could just be time-sensitive, and if we need to set a special meeting for Monday night, then we need to do that, unfortunately. So, it, I don't hear anyone-
Would you like to, will you take that on?
No, I'm gonna leave that being chair, we're gonna be 4%.
Let, let's see if we can finish this up in five minutes or then.
Okay, okay, let's do that.
So, so, so to add to that, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with any of your logics there, however, you know, like, like you said, the, the, the assessments, maybe the, uh, tax assessments, maybe they've went up 7 to 10%, and maybe they have, but I think over the, over the last 12 months and over the next 24 months, you're gonna see wages go up, you know, the minimum wage, uh, that's gone up 25 or 30%, and you look at the fact that we were already, already bare bones, personally, I feel that, that anything, asking for anything less than an increase is, is not gonna get us where we need to be. Also, you have something on the table right now where people are voting, and, you know, maybe they support having a pool, but now, oh, hey, there's another option out there, and maybe I'll vote in November for the 16 instead of the 17. So, so I, I, I don't necessarily disagree with any of the logics, but I, I would be in favor of the, the 17 cents per thousand. Continue.
Um, I guess, in, in terms of my, um, I, I, I think the thing, again, this was, is something that I didn't realize was coming up, um, my only comments about this are, before we, I, I, I would prefer to feel better equipped, um, obviously, this is, this would only happen, or I assume it would only happen if we pa, if we fail in August, and I assume if we pass in August, by whatever chance that might be, but nonetheless, if we pass, it would not go on, okay? And therefore, there would be no expense. Um, I guess from my perspective, and, and maybe this speaks to what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, is I would like to be better assured about the strategy for addressing this, and I'm not, I happen to look at you, and that's, this is not your job, Director McCaslin, but I would like to be better assured, before we spent taxpayer money on this, that, that it would be, that there would be a strategy for addressing this, and, and that, for me, is concerning. It, I, I, I'm stuck, I'm stuck, and I don't know what to do, I think, I will, because I feel like I must do that, I feel like I will approve something, and I'll go with whatever needs to be approved. Um, I, I have never felt so sold out in my entire life, but, um, I, I don't feel like, I, I want to say no, because I don't feel like we have a better strategy, but I'm hopeful that we will get one.
Yes.
So-
When is the drop dead date on getting this on the ballot?
August 1st, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So, we either, we have a motion on the table, we either vote on that motion, or we vote on the motion, the motion could be amended, or we continue the motion and have a discussion at a later point prior to August 1st. Those are our choices right now.
I, I don't support this motion, I am willing to take over as chair, though, I know you have to leave.
So, why don't we just vote on my, my motion, and then we can move on to change it, to push it back to 17.
Okay. All right, so, all right, there's no more discussion. So the motion to approve Resolution seventeen oh two, changing the tax amount to sixteen cents per thousand of assessed property valuation for eighteen, twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Roll call vote, Commissioner Frash?
Nay.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Nay.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Singleton votes nay, the motion fails. Do I have another motion?
You still have time?
Do it. You're gonna take it over, do it, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you're...
No, no, if you're gonna take over, like...
Okay. I, I motion that we put forward in the same language, is my motion.
To adopt seventeen oh two?
Yes.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Commissioner Hoffmeyer and seconded by Commissioner Frash to adopt Resolution seventeen oh two as, as written. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
Just, I, I know you're in a time crunch, just what I said earlier, that I think even staying at a flat funding rate is, is gonna be a tight squeeze.
Commissioner Ford?
No.
Commissioner Frash?
No.
I have no comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Frash?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford?
Nay.
Commissioner Singleton, the chair votes aye, the motion passes. So if you are not going to, are you...
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like we should be, with just three people, there's, there's things on here I want to discuss, so...
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Well, unfortunately, I, as, as stated before, I'm already over time, and I hate to see things...
You can't, you can't make a motion?
I, I can't make a motion, and I can't second a motion, but unfortunately, if we're losing a quorum, then we're losing the meeting, and I would prefer that we did not do things this way.
Well, let's do things, I mean, let's officially adjourn.
I, well, we will, we will be officially adjourned, as it were, by, by process of elimination. So unfortunately, I do, I do have to go, I have, I have to get my husband to see Tac.